Because you know everybody else. Very, um, well, so yeah, let's, I mean, we can just say, is there, is there anything that, since we're talking about the building project, is there anything that this team needs to tackle right now? I did have a quick conversation with Diane, who is very close to Rebecca Wendell, who was the girl who used to work for Planning Decisions and did enrollment studies for Scarborough a couple of times with Planning Decisions. And Planning Decisions kind of broke up, they went off and became independent consultants. And Rebecca came to work at the middle school, so she's our current employee. And the last time we did an enrollment study, Rebecca took it on as a like private consulting. And she did an amazing job. And so we were kind of hoping that she would be willing to do it again because she has so much background information. She has, I mean, she's like a licensed professional, she has all the skills, but she's also so embedded in the community and, you know, and she's just been through the whole COVID thing with us and totally understands all the craziness with Scarborough, you know, building up, building down, and enrollment up and enrollment down. And so anyway, long story short, Diane had a quick conversation with her and said, would you still do this even though you're kind of, you kind of quit that gig? And she said, yeah, I would, I would consider it, it would be an interesting
Oh, nice.
project.
I did too, I thought you were going down the no path.
No, 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 don't care. And meanwhile, you know, we do have other resources. We have Nezdeck, which is a firm out of Massachusetts that does the whole New England thing. And we are a member of their community and pages. They're the ones that do the high school certification, which I don't know if you guys were here for that last process when the high school got re-certified or accredited. But Nezdeck also does other consulting stuff, kind of like MSMA, they have their sort of management profile. So I was thinking about them. And then there was another gal that reached out to us that Power School has module. But honestly, if you can get somebody who really lives, knows, understands, reads Scarborough stuff, we're just so lucky to have that. So she did say she would be interested in thinking about it, the question is the timing and what's the best way to get a good read? And she suggested that if we waited until the fall, even after the opening of school, like maybe get into the October count kind of time of year. October 1 is when the state polls data because it's sort of the moment when they feel like, you know, your, your basic beginning of the school year registrations are done and, and your population kind of stabilizes a little bit. Not that you can get move-ins during the year, but so she was thinking kind of in that way and said, you know, put a little thought to it. Come up with what she thinks would be the best way for us to get a true read on what's going on. So that's good news, I think. And as far as the, the cost estimates that I wrote on here, I think that was just taken from some of the conversations we've had about that would be a good thing to have. But I'm not sure who asks for that. Was it, did, is the building committee going to talk to her?
Yeah. Because they're just, they're based on like the site selection process that we've had so far, there are just different scenarios.
Exactly, exactly. But at least if, you know, I think the consensus was if we could put a little bit more meat to the proposal.
Yeah.
We might get more attention.
Yeah, well, the, the feedback from the council is that it's not in our five-year plan.
It's not real.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just need to get it in there, I think, for that to kind of start.
And we got some feedback from the community too, that for them to sort of assess the situation in the libraries. Yeah, so they want to see sort of what's to come.
Yeah, so I think we have a target of before the election or before the referendum vote.
Yeah.
You and I were at the town council meeting when they were talking about when they would set the referendum date. And I think that their time in was August, right? Sometimes in August, they would prove that the library goes to a referendum.
Yeah, I think it has to be then, right, to get the ballots.
Right. That would be the latest they could have that conversation. And they were also talking about, council was talking about gathering more info about the library project. Some people love it and some people don't. So I think it would be who busts to have at least something that, yeah, so this will probably be one of those things that just sort of sits on our agenda until.
So is that pretty much a lot that it's going to be on the?
That's there. That's the library's request.
Right.
I am not convinced that the town council will vote to put it to a referendum. So it's their choice. It's just how they vote. And I don't know.
Right.
I don't know exactly where they will.
Yeah, there are some that have said that they, they want to know, you know, what this looks like.
Yeah.
You know, and then you weigh, you know, you weigh your priorities.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they were decided so much as they want more information before. So they, they did leave it in their budget.
No, they.
They put that weird amendment.
Yeah.
Right.
Sort of, they acknowledged it.
Yeah, and they, and they would need, they would need to vote on it if it were to go on the ballot by August.
Yeah. For the, to hit the November ballot.
Yeah.
And the referendum along with the regular election, we would have to, yeah, know. Decide by August.
I can, maybe can reach out and see if they picked a date yet for what, meaning not going to recur it because it's going to be a big, it'll be a big.
Yeah, don't think, do they go down the month?
They go down to one of my.
Yeah, just like we do. Yeah, so that's something we should sort of just keep in our minds. I'm going backwards, but I sort of like it. Turf and track, we're in the process of getting the design approved for the track, sorry, the turf replacement and making sure all the lines are in the right places and that logo's in the middle and all that stuff. So we've got Geo Surfaces is the company that's creating and installing the turf. And we've been back and forth with them for the last month with a team of people saying, you know, here's what we want where. And the team is principally Mike Legage and Todd Susan because they both have the major use of the field. And then, you know, a bunch of their staff who know the ins and outs of things and me and Jeff and touch-ups. And so everybody's kind of got hands-on. And Waterden Curran is doing the project management for us. They've been awesome, super responsive, really smart. Really, really capable, just like you, you get the feeling that you're not going to do something stupid because they're there to say, do this, do that, you know, don't do something stupid.
Yeah, well, the, the target date for completion is mid-August.
Right.
And that's going to be my question.
Yeah.
You know, and Mike, Mike is smartly planning for, you know, basically having alternate sites for stuff through like mid-September. You know, just in case, right? And so, but that's, that's the, that's the goal.
And it's, you know, there's all these little ifs because of manufacturing, but the cool thing about picking Geo Surfaces is that they do the manufacturing and the install. So they're like soup to nuts for the whole project. And so they have a little bit more control than if you're subcontracting on and stuff. They'll subcontract some of the site work and surveying and stuff like that. But they're still saying, knock on wood, that, that they can do it. The, the, the actual material should be delivered by the end of July. And that there'll be time for them to get it in and ready to go by the middle of August.
When did they start taking out the existing? Is that all?
That's actually all part of that same thing. Yeah. And, and from what I understand, it's not a super complex thing. I think that doing some of the site work around the outside of it where it's anchored is the only really sort of tricky piece to it. And otherwise, it's more like, you know, roll down the carpet, roll down the carpet. They do have to level everything out. And they're also coordinating with the fill people. Because you know, they have that stuff that goes into the turf. So you've got the grass nodules and then you've got the foamy whatevers.
The fill people are separate.
It's a different company, but they work, they'll work as a sort of a subcontractor to Geo Surfaces. They'll work hand in hand. They're going to pay them separately. That's been really interesting. Never did that project before. Learning something new.
Every year.
Every day. So they're only going to take like two.
Oh, it's just a week.
Oh, yeah. I'm scared. That's nice of you to just.
Oh, yeah. This morning and I.
Oh, no.
From a spider. On my steering wheel.
I'm scared.
I don't mind spiders.
Spiders are good for the snakes.
And snakes.
I'm good with snakes.
I don't mind frogs, but I don't want to get close where they might jump and attack me.
No virtual pools for you.
Yes.
I'm going to show you my frog lanyard that I got last week because I'm thinking, oh, virtual pools. Change over.
Yeah, I know. I, I'll, I'll wear that for the next meeting for sure.
So they only think a couple of weeks for installation, though, it sounds like.
Yeah, and you know, all of this is just sort of, you're going, geez, please, I hope it all works out. But you know, they're, they're super pros. These guys did Gillette Stadium for the Patriots. So we've got to figure that they.
I know, right?
You've got to figure the kids.
Kind of know what they're doing.
Yeah.
They probably didn't do it in two weeks, but.
No.
But you know, they've got.
Yeah, I did. The football team, the football schedule is out already. And the first game is Thornton at home. And so I know they were talking about that at the boosters, like.
Thornton at home here in Scarborough.
Yeah, so they're like, and Mike has his contingency plan, right? But this is the, apparently, this is the first time they've played Thornton at home, the first game in 10 years.
That would work out that way.
Right. So everybody's like, oh, please, please.
Is that a September date?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, so far, so good. And you know, I'm, I'm on all of the emails and making sure that everybody gets the messages. And I turned into some sort of project coordinator somewhere along the line. So I'll be able to give you guys updates and, you know, and I'm sure that once we actually get to the point where we know somebody's going to be rolling in here with trucks, we can put messages out to the community as well.
Yep.
We don't, we will have a real, actual promised schedule, actually, probably within a couple of weeks. So once they get the order in and they know it's in the queue and everything is coming, then, you know, barring catastrophe, they should know exactly how it's going to go.
It was the yarn.
Something about yarn is the latest thing. Yeah. It's an interesting word, yarn. Is that what they, do they mean the, do the grass bits?
That's, and by yarn, do you mean sewing?
Again, lingo, right? You know, we've got a lot of, what, what's, what's the yarn, yarn issues?
So we as a finance committee that are going to have to figure out, track.
What happens next? Yeah. Yeah. And I was taking a look at what the real language is in the town charter about what does your referendum mean? And does it give you the authority to spend or bond? Because that's always been a question. Like, are you just authorizing how much you bond?
Bond, oh, right.
Right? Because you're borrowing money. And so that has this fiscal impact for the community versus whether you have it in your budget. But I think just from close reading of it, that it really is trying to authorize the expense as well. So, you know, we're not quite to the point where we need to do anything yet, but I think we'll probably want to go back and talk to the towns. Maybe talk to the town's attorney about what's in the charter and say, okay, you know, do we need to re-approved by the community for a different amount? Do we value engineering down to the point where we can get it done? Um, you know, it's not going to get cheaper over the next year, but.
I wonder if there's any upside to doing that now because they're about to take on their charter. Remember, they did their charter review and they're about to pick it back up.
Are they ready to?
Yes.
Actually vote on it?
No, but I think they're going to start going through all the recommendations from the committee. I think that's where they're at.
I wonder if maybe we should talk to John or who would we talk to? We should talk to Tom probably.
Yeah.
And ask them about their interpretation of that. Because I know Tom and I have had that conversation in the past over something or another.
It might already be like a recommendation. I, I know the recommendations are already public. I don't recall them. Not going to pretend they're.
Yeah, that's the frustrating part about, you know, no progress on real, real progress.
On the site.
I know.
You know, I was hopeful or anticipating that at least by the fall that, that, you know, the current site would either be eliminated.
Yeah.
Right? As a, as a potential site for a new school or.
Selected.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It definitely won't be selected by then, or I'd be shocked if that were the case. And then, you know, but whether or not it was, you know, be eliminated so that we can just finish this.
Right, exactly.
You know?
And have a plan and, yeah.
Because there will be. You know, likely close to a million, if not a little more than a million left.
Yeah.
That was a, that was approved by the voters.
Exactly.
Once the turf has been, the new turf.
Right, yeah. And could we do the track? I wonder if we could do the track. Well, the, the original estimate was that it was going to cost more than the 1.9. Go up over 200. And so there were a lot of little, what I would call ancillary bits to the project that were not specifically just the fixing of the track, but that it was putting in some wiring and putting in some fencing and working on the borders and, and some things that, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, well, what if we just narrowed it down? And then some of these extra things we could do through operating or through capital in, in, in following years, where we would know that it would be part of the big vision, but it wouldn't necessarily be a project that was authorized, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, that was kind of where I was headed before this whole site selection thing went weird.
Yeah.
And I still think that that's a reasonable approach is to see, well, how much money you got left in the bank and then what can you get for it?
Yeah.
And, and then go from there and figure out how much we can pull out of there.
Yeah. And then also look at the charter and see what we.
Well, right. And that's the other thing, right? So if, if you were able to say, the charter authorizes us only to spend this much money, or it says we can bond this much money and then we can figure out the rest on our own. It's too different.
Do you think, um, going, moving forward with the budget, if we know that this track and turf is a 10-year lifespan, can we start putting aside in our capital reserve money account, money every year? Can we budget every year so that we're not asking for the bond?
Has this officially been turned over to the schools, this facility?
Not an official about it, but I could tell.
I mean, the way I see it is.
It was still technically there.
Dumped on us. Exactly. So should they be the ones saving towards?
They tried that. There was actually, when the, when the turf field first opened.
Officially has been turned over.
Yeah.
They haven't told me.
When they, when the turf field was first opened, it was making a lot of rental revenue.
Right.
And you probably remember the story that, that they put it into a reserve account. The idea was to do all the maintenance through that. And then it stopped being a hot commodity because everybody was getting to a field. So that revenue stream tapered off and they used it. And then they didn't have enough to.
Yep.
Do, but I, I think, honestly, I think capital reserve money should be part of our year-end process every year.
Yeah.
Because if we have surplus, I think, which, please, dear God, we always do, we should be allocating a small portion of that every year to building that capital reserve account now that we have it. And then, you know, there's going to be an expectation that because we have that, that we are using it to, you know, keep up with maintenance on some of these regular things that are going to pop up.
Well, there's the maintenance of it and then there's the replacement.
Right, yeah, agree, I agree. And could the replacement be a line item in the budget that we're setting, like regardless of the surplus, we're setting aside money every year out of our budget for the replacement that's needed in 10 years? Could we?
Sure that.
Could we do that? Are we allowed to do it? Are you?
I don't think you can. I think the only way that I've seen, that I've seen schools be able to fund an account like that is for there to be money left over that was originally expected to be spent on something. Rather than saying, oh, we have a line item in our budget. And what we're really doing is we're taking that and putting it in our bank account. Because remember, we only have approval to spend that money in the current year.
Yeah.
From the voters. And I'm sure you could probably make a really cool case with some semantics that would get you there. But I think that, you know, the spirit of the thing is that you only get approval for the money you need to run things during the course of the year. And we can get some advice on that now that we have the capital reserve fund. I know that, that Tom Hall tried to put $200,000 in his budget to collect taxes and put it into exactly that, put it into the bank account.
Well, because how do you ever get out of borrowing?
Well, I think that's part of the problem, right? But you're, I don't think you're supposed to collect more taxes than you need, like Kate said, for the year that you're budgeting for.
Yeah, it just seems like this in my head, like the finances of it just seems.
Yeah.
Right, because now we're paying interest on this loan and versus just collecting it, right, we're going to have the debt service versus just collecting upfront and saving.
If you were doing it.
Right, just, just like a regular household budget, exactly.
If you were doing it at home, you would take a piece of your revenue, which is your income and. Same, it makes perfect sense. And I don't want to just say, we can't do that. I feel like I know that we can't, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask some folks to. So for the capital reserve account, the, the mechanics of it for this year are not terribly difficult. I've talked with the town about I think they're going to actually put it in an interest-bearing account. It's going to be segregated in a fund that I'm going to build in unis. It'll just be a special fund, just like our local grants and the, like the tech maintenance fees is a really good example, right? We collected those fees and put them in a separate place where you could only use them for tech stuff. We can build an account, funds, just exactly like that. And that'll be our capital reserve fund. Because the state doesn't particularly care about those. They're not like a state or federal grant.
Right.
But the auditors can still look at them and, and we can watch them and they'll, they'll be on our financials.
So maybe from that perspective, it's just a question of setting intentions for that account and knowing that in 10 years, we're going to have to replace, not the entire project again, right? But at least probably the surface.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, unless we go out and we build our new fabulous athletic complex. I don't. We're all biting our tongues. But I, I will ask some of our really smart people at the state level at Department of Education Finance, if it's possible for a school just to put a line in their budget that says, you know, we want to put money into reserve account. To budget for reserves.
I mean, it was the biggest criticism when this whole thing started, the first time it failed, is why has no one been saving, knowing that this only had a 10-year?
You know, that's kind of the, the, a, a big example of the question that we get all the time. It's like, why do you keep putting school buses in your, in your capital budget? You're going to replace three school buses every year. Why isn't that in your operating budget? And at, there was a point when we actually did have it in the operating budget for about two years. And then we had, you know, an economic crisis. And suddenly, we needed to take $300,000 out of our budget somewhere. And so we put it back into capital. And that was where all the town's vehicle replacement was. And I think we're getting a little better at that, not to go in the weeds, but the town is actually appropriating a lot of that money through taxes rather than borrowing it.
Oh, that's good. I know that's been a goal of theirs, right, to get those things.
Right. So if you look, if you look at our capital budget, in some of the documents we have where it says the funding source, a lot of the smaller ones are appropriated. If it's under $100,000, it's definitely appropriated. So you're not borrowing it, you're just raising the money. But it's for that truck in that year, right?
Yeah.
So you raise it, you spend it, done.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, from a fiscal policy standpoint, that's really the way to do it.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, whatever the mechanism is, I think this team can pay attention to making sure that we're stashing money for that purpose and not running into the same issue, you know?
There's no anticipation of like increased rental fees once this thing is done, right? Because everyone has a chart now.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, I would think that, that it would be better than it is today because the condition of the turf doesn't need people who want to use it. You know, if you have the choice between renting for your soccer league here or renting for your soccer league, and a league in a newer facility, you're going to go for the newer facility, maybe when we're brand new. That would be more attractive.
I wonder, I feel like we're so maxed out there anyways, even with the terrible facility.
I don't think it's going to be a big money maker, like it was when it was exciting and new and different, nobody had such a thing. I think it really, I think our investment is for fundamentally for ourselves and our kids and our programs. And whatever we get over and above that is kind of gravy.
For us to stash away.
Yeah, yeah. And not, not to go down another rabbit hole, but there's the whole question of sponsorships. And, you know, you want the, the Scarborough High School Hannah for Shields or?
Yeah.
You know, there's.
I do.
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I most certainly do.
Right.
And so, you know, that's something that there is, there is some, a board policy about advertisement, sort of, you know, and, and like promoting of, of businesses and things like that, whose name you can have where. But I would think that might be another avenue whereby we could help with the track.
The Hannah for track. Hannah for track.
We've got little banners and some things. Fix them right up. There's got to be somebody in town who really wants to. Okay, well, anyway, that's, that's sort of a roundabout of building and turf and capital. And just to go back to the building project for a minute, I know we don't have another one of those visioning things until the fall, right?
Yep.
Which, you know, that's probably good. Maybe we'll hear people up and they'll be more excited about anything in September than they are in June. But I did wonder about a couple of outreach possibilities. And I'm not sure who would own this, maybe if the building communications committee gets their feet on the ground. One of them was, we talked about it at the leadership team Tuesday, was getting to the pre-K folks that. Maybe we can do this. Well, you know, the, the pre-K facilities in town, the toddler rooms and Heidi's houses and folks like that, because those would be the families that would likely benefit with younger kids from a new, from a new school. And, you know, the point being made at the meeting on Tuesday was that a lot of the people who, a lot of the families who would actually have kids who would be able to take advantage of a new building, their kids are infants.
Right.
Yep. Right? And so how do we find them?
Yeah.
They're leaving their mother's eye.
They're, they're, they're part of family planning. But so, you know, at least we could catch a family burden down.
Yeah.
And that are just getting their families started. And then the other thing I was thinking about was some way to, to get those really beautiful promotional materials that Harriman did, you know, the cool charts and graphs and into a brochure or a printed document of some kind that we could.
Some direct mail.
Yeah. Well, you know, we did this thing called Schoolhouse News some years ago. And the idea behind that was a little fold in that went into the leader. And we did them quarterly for probably two years. And the idea was that we're reaching out to you outside of budget season. We just want you to know. And the idea was that we're reaching out to you outside of budget season. We just want you to know what great things are going on. A lot of communities have them. I think Cape has one and Jerome RC five has one, but it's a little newsletter to the community, but it's not to the school communities.
Everybody.
And so, um somebody was talking about, you know, well, what was, you know, we had people going door to door and we had people knocking and saying, hey neighbor, you know, this thing's happening. But the the look of those presentations that that Harriman's been doing is I think is so charming and bright and cheerful and full of facts, but also interesting.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, um I think they've done such a great job of it. We have them, we've been sending stuff out electronically and we have links and recordings, but there's people that aren't in the demographic that we're gonna reach with those things.
Yeah, I would think this would fall to our new subcommittee, right?
The communications for the building.
Well, yeah, we gotta get that going and it's it's frustrating because there was one person who we identified who um responded to the survey, who we thought would be a perfect not just subcommittee chair, but then also part of the building steering committee, just just too busy and can't, so. Right, and so we did, and then we did that emails to invite, yeah, uh there were four others who expressed interest in volunteering for communications committee. Um so we sent out emails inviting them to the next advisory, we're having an advisory, um but which is a subset of the bigger committee um on Tuesday of next week, so hopefully.
So see if they show up and have enough time to commit.
Yeah, and so we can just get started with something and then the idea is really, I mean, I, you know, our feeling was at least um that right, right now, like the site selection and all these other big things, like we just, we need more engagement. You know, before we're really gonna get anywhere, so um doing some kind of a blitz over the course of the summer in preparation for some of the things that are already scheduled kind of for the fall as far as like educational visiting and that kind of thing, but we just need, we need more awareness, we just need more people. Right, try and get some of the momentum in terms of awareness and and people talking about it.
Another reason why I mentioned the Summer Fest and, I mean, I know a lot of people go to Summer Fest that aren't necessarily connected with the schools. So really feel like we have, I mean, I shouldn't say that we have good outreach to the school community either, cause nobody's showing up, but you know, at at least we know that we can send them things where you, you know, you have people who are just not gonna subscribe to the school newsletter or the town newsletter. So, you know, we put it, do this up at Summer Fest and maybe have some printed things. Yeah, we got like a computer there that like runs through a And everything's wired out there, so you can have all kinds of cool buildings. Runs with sirens.
Yeah, go around and
I don't know, I don't, I mean, this should just be how comfortable the board is, but we might be at a point where we need to start reaching out to the people we know. Have the groups that listen to them and just say, can you guys just put this on your page, help us out?
Yeah.
Spread the word.
Some of the social media, it's always telling us what to do.
Yes, exactly.
Maybe we can tell them what to do.
No, really, you're right. I mean, they have, obviously, they have those pages because people are interested in the school community, so, great.
Yeah, and there's various.
You know, and at this point, even if it's a, you know, you know, like a debate over whether we should be, you know. Yeah, rather have that kind of out in the open a little bit and generating that that awareness um than than not, because then you can make the case and you're at least.
Yeah, well, that's what it is, right? Just having anyone paying attention to it. Whether you hate it, love it.
Just thinking about like the young families that are gonna benefit from this, it's just like the day we tour these buildings now as you're planning for, you know, cause you're here in the school system, not just a day to tour the school and then like also have those displayed in the school as we're walking, right? This is this is the program we follow, but we're also hoping to grow the school and
You could take them to Blue Point and then take them to Wentworth and
Show the difference.
Here's what you can have, yeah.
Like a tour day for this. Open to, open to the public for young families. Not during the school years.
Right, yeah. Well, I know they they felt like well, the building principals at KT felt like the folks that did come from the town council and the board and, you know, some of our folks that were invited to come in really got their eyes open to some extent and
Yeah.
You know, the more you can do that kind of thing, the more somebody in the community might get behind it.
Do you know the netting is gonna come off in the summer around the playgrounds? Well, I know eight more has the netting.
The stuff, the one at Pleasant Hill, I don't think will come down, because my understanding is that the neighbors wanted that.
Cause that's always been one way that young families would
They could come on.
Oh, they can be, I thought you meant on the perimeter of Pleasant Hill, eight corners, there's a netting around.
Around the, yeah.
In the summer?
Well, uh no, as of right now, I'm just wondering, is it coming down?
Like you can't go in the playground because it's closed off?
Yeah, Blue Point is wide open.
Yeah, and I think families in the neighborhood use Pleasant Hill as well.
Yeah.
Um I think, you know, Eight Corners doesn't really have a super walkable family community, it's more commercial over there, so maybe that's part of it. But I I do know the other two have had, like, folks who live in the community.
Used to play on it all the time before the kids were there. Um we are having our next, we've had our, was last one, was the first one we had at one of the schools? We had it at Eight Corners, so we're, our next one I think is Pleasant Hill, then we'll have one at Blue Point, maybe there's like if we could just get people to come to those, they can tour the school and our meeting, it's just no one, I don't think anyone came, did they? I was remote. But no one else did, but that was the hope was
Right. Yeah, it's a good point, and I mean, I think that's not a bad strategy, maybe we'll just try to Right, and maybe people will, like, in Pleasant Hill will have a particular interest and come to that one. You said you did a corner. The Pleasant Hill community, just in my anecdotal experience, seems to be super tuned in more so than Eight Corners. Blue Point's sort of in the middle, but maybe I'll ask my HOA president to share one of them.
Yeah, that's a good idea, for sure.
We do have a lot of babies in the neighborhood now.
Wow, right, the babies are our demographic.
But that's what I mean, especially we're gonna have to just start making extra efforts.
Right, well, that's the thing, I mean, part of being in these leadership positions is to network with people.
Yeah.
You know, the people who whose ear you have for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Oh, which is a good segue to the budget outreach, and the only thing I wanted to ask about that is, I know we have um we've been putting Hey Go Vote in the district-wide newsletter, which goes to every family in the district, and then also the individual schools are putting in a plug that says I've asked Todd about those sandwich board things that say vote here. I don't think those ever made it out. I don't know if he could find them. We used to have them right out in front of the entrances when people would drop their kids off. If he was able to find them. But do we wanna do, um there's robo calls, but robo calls are sort of controversial. Sometimes people are like, why you bothering me? The only time we really use them now is for storms and
Yep.
emergencies and stuff, and that's probably not a bad thing. But that's pretty much the extent of what we've been doing is putting things on the mission.
Yeah.
Portals that we already have.
Yeah.
Education.
Yeah, we saw it on the way in, she said there's probably just shy of a thousand early ballots cast.
Yeah.
Which is low, but last June was
Yeah, it's true.
I would have thought this year would have been bigger.
Well, there's some primary stuff going on, there's Did anybody tell you who we should vote for for town council? I saw the candidates, I thought they all sounded really smart and
They did, yeah.
And engaged and interested and
Definitely.
And I didn't see any lemons in the group.
No, they all seem very bright.
Yeah, it's gonna be an interesting. Right, so it's five fifteen, and I want you guys to be able to get out on time, so um I'm gonna go open up the financials in a second, but I just wanted to say the quick update on year-end processes. Um first of all, the fact that Ruth is retiring is kind of terrifying. We have a brand new audit firm this year.
Oh, that's right.
And we just met the lead auditor um These are all running together. Anyway, super great guy, um Markham is the name of the company, um and they're out of Rhode Island is where they have their whole base, but they have clients all through New England. And I think we'll only be the second main client that they have and the first municipality, so they've got a little bit of learning to do, but they have a Portland office, and in the Portland office, they have a gal called Darlene Kukos who used to work for Matt Page and was actually on the town audit for Scarborough. Scarborough mom, one of the booster moms, um super smart and great lady.
Good.
So, we asked, hey, you know, we're gonna take advantage of this person that works for you, that's, that knows our stuff, and he said, yeah, absolutely. Be able to have somebody in here who can, you know, hit the ground running a little bit, so that was kind of helpful, and um so the things that'll happen for the next couple of months as far as year-end is concerned is um in June, we're gonna close out payroll for the fiscal year. We do um all kinds of fancy transfers to book accruals for the summer, which is a liability that the auditors want us to cover. So I finished my teaching job on June seventeenth and I get payroll through the summer. But I've already earned the money, so if I walked in on June eighteenth and said, give me all my money, we need, under the law, we'd have to have it available, and so, you know, that's a few million, few million for the teachers for five summer payrolls. Um it's imaginary because of the town of Clark, Scarborough closed down on June thirty, we had bigger fish to fry than you know, figuring out how to pay the teachers, but it's, it it does impact our our fiscal um status, our bond rating, things like that. So we'll do a bunch of transfers to make sure that at year-end we have everything where we need it to be. Um and in July and August, we're still getting bills that are actually for FY twenty-two. Um so we actually spend the whole summer kind of cleaning up, cleaning up, cleaning up, moving things around, making sure that everything is paid off. By the end of August, we hopefully have everything paid for that belongs in FY twenty-two. Um the auditors will come a little bit in the springtime um within the next month or so, they'll come and do a little bit of testing and kind of get used to what we've got, what's going on. And then they'll come and do big field work um in the fall. So usually by September, I'm able to give some kind of a report out to the board. It's often the first meeting in Oc- October, just the way that it fits in with the start of the school year, and then I do the slideshow and say, here's how our year ended as far as we know. Um between uh the start of October and the end of November, the auditors will be in and out and asking questions and getting everything all squared away. So we probably won't get an audit report until the end of the year. The calendar year. But that's kind of how things flow, and it's a little weird because usually as we do the quarterlies, we're just saying, okay, you know, done with the quarter, within the next month, we know what we're gonna tell you, but because it's the year-end and we've gotta close everything out, grants have to all be reported out and reimbursed and posted to the right places. Summer's a little more um work to get the year-end in the shape that it's supposed to be. But depending on when we all get together, I can give you how much reports on those. And you'll get the pleasure of the big fat slideshow in the fall. Tell you where we're at, and I'm hoping, you know, it looks like we're gonna have some decent surplus, not as much as we had last year, but just enough, I just want enough so that we're stepping down in our use of revenue in the um coming budget years and not, you you know, having these big holes because we've used so much surplus in these last two years that all of a sudden we don't have it. So that's the target. The financials don't have a huge amount. There's a huge amount of detail in them, um they do have a little guidance on the first two pages, like I usually do. Um a couple of things called out in expenditures of variances and and what they from prior years, um revenues are pretty steady, um adult debt, school nutrition. School nutrition is still super exciting because they're making money. Best story of the year. Um in capital projects, things kind of slow down this time of year because um for facilities, Todd is trying to do things during the winter break and when kids aren't here and staff isn't here, so things aren't disruptive, so the money's either spent in the summertime or it's spent over winter and February vacation, sometimes April break, and then things kind of calm down until kids get out of school, so we'll pick up again in in the summertime. Um and then in the actual financials, you'll see it looks really similar to what you've seen before, you've got the current year-to-date expended in the fuzzy column here, and then you've got three years' worth of um comparisons, the current year and the two prior years. And we're, we're kind of still crawling out of how odd FY twenty and twenty-one have been, um but you can you'll see if you look at the categories, we're kind of bouncing back to FY twenty numbers in terms of percentages of what's spent, so. It's been a lot more normal, whatever that might be. And um there's a page, half-page for adult education. Adult Head still has a pretty high fund balance because um they're still not fully up to speed on all the programs and the participation in all the programs, so the um the amount that they've spent on instructors is still a little bit under budget, but uh that means they'll have a fund balance at year-end that we can use for revenue in the next year, just like we do with John. And school nutrition is still keeping pace, spending and and revenues are the same, which is just so extraordinary. Um grant funds, we still have a lot of grant funds, uh revenues to collect. Um and I complain about that. For three quarters about their brand-new grant reimbursement system, which is so cumbersome and so annoying and takes twice as long. But the the cool thing about the grants is that you're allocated the money, you're spending the money, you know you're gonna get it back, it's already set aside for you, it's just a question of bureaucracy and actually having the money moved from the state to the town, so um it's not a worry, it's just annoying. And the last page is the capital budget and made a pretty good dent in our um in our budgeted amounts, the the most money that we haven't spent is the dirt and track, and we did get the first big bill from Waterden Current, their um services for the whole project are supposed to cost us around so, that's a piece of the puzzle, and and they have been working it up top, so. They're gonna bill us for what they've done so far and then kind of keep the rest in reserve. But everything else is is um pretty much spent down. Um the other one that that has still a high balance on it is the high school stem lab or science lab, but in that one is almost done too. We just got what, maybe the last one, so when you see quarter four, you see those go down. That was like the five cent tour, so if you have questions about it, uh what I'll do is I'll, I'll leave it out there. That was like the five cent tour. So if you have questions about it, uh, what I'll do is I'll, I'll leave it out there for you. You guys have a link to it. Um, in the, in the addenda that I just sent out. I can also email the doc to you if you want. Um, if that's helpful. And then we have a peek and make sure that there's something crazy in there before I post it. Yeah, it's linked into the agenda. That, that's easy. So nothing scary in there, which is nice.
Well, that's good.
I know. I don't wanna see anything scary. I'm really looking forward to getting my head out of um, COVID absence management after next week and dig back into some financials. I was saying to Diane the other day, I feel like my, my real responsibilities have usually been sort of maybe sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, depending on the time of year, finance and HR. It's completely flipped, like all HR right now. And, you know, even with Maria, who's been an awesome addition, she got sucked into doing pool testing coordinators and.
That's true.
She's only just back in the office as of last month, so.
Oh, wow.
I mean, not that she hasn't been here, but she's been out and about running things, so. We're getting ramped up again, but.
Can I ask you another question about the A Moment thing?
Yeah.
Once Rebecca starts it, how long does that take? I guess I'm wondering, cause I feel like we should check with Lisa and see like how we impact her, seeing as she's gonna need that information.
Yeah, um. One and a halfish, maybe?
It's not, yeah, it's not a super long process, particularly with the systems that she's already got built and the data that she's already got built. I don't know if you've seen any of her presentations, but I mean, they are outstanding and she's just got an enormous amount of.
Yeah, it might even be faster because she's already done one here.
Well, see, that's the thing. I was thinking that it might be easier for her to take these projections that she already has and so maybe update some of the data. And it would, it would definitely be easier for that to happen than for somebody to start from scratch.
Right.
Yeah.
But I guess let me flip that around and say, if you talk with Lisa and ask her, you know, when is it gonna be critical for you to have that information, then we can turn around and, and talk with Rebecca about it. She could do it. I think, you know, she could do it over the summer, but her take was that the data would be better and stronger if we waited.
Yeah, and I think Diane brought up the point at our long range planning meeting, the town is about to make potentially some big choices. So if we can hold off until that's done, that's gonna be probably the best thing for the study.
True, true, because it's all about how many holes.
Right, yeah.
And it used to be in the good old days, you did a demographic study and it was about birth rates and death rates and current population. But with the growth, the, the boom in, in housing.
Yeah, it feels like there's a lot.
They changed that whole model and that was where we got the newer types of um, projections that Rebecca did the last time, which incorporated.
Right.
Housing starts.
Yep, we had all those different scenarios.
Right, and she was, you know, in their meeting with, it was Dan Bacon at the time, I think, and Jay and, you know, was sitting down and talking about who lived where and what kind of apartments they were and who could, you know, how many kids you could fit in there and.
So she'll do that again.
I would think so, yeah. And, and again, this is really just like the first little.
Yeah.
Hey, could you, could you, would you?
Yeah.
You know, we haven't really talked about details at all, but it would be helpful to know where's the sweet spot in terms of getting that done.
Well, it helps to know it's not a lengthy process. I had no idea how.
I don't think so. I mean, I'm, here I am saying, yeah. And she does have a day job now, but um, no. I think she, she did different layers of it too. So there may be like a quick version and then a more in-depth version, depending on how much. That would be true for me, so. Um, but yeah, let's find out what Harriman thinks.
Yeah.
Um, you know, how that fits into their scheme.
We should also solicit any feedback from the council. Just before we go and do it, and it's not gonna be something that they're expecting to see, because my guess is they'll wanna see that as part of the building project. Right?
Well, it's a, it's a part of the justification for the building project, certainly small part, but yeah. It's part of the justification for the size of the building, right?
Yes.
You could say we need a new building for the existing kids.
Yep.
Because of the, you know, the deficits and problems that exist with what we currently have. But in order to make the argument that you need a building that has a greater capacity too.
Yes.
Or that's future-proofed to some degree, you know, that's where you need those.
Yep.
Those numbers. Um, so it's kind of, where does that fit into the the planning process? Um, I don't know, maybe Rebecca will say, well, I think that the enrollment study that I gave you the last time is gonna come back.
There's been so much new development in town.
Well, there's, there's been a lot of that that was taken into account.
There was.
Yeah, I mean, they, she, Carrier Woods was up, the Beacon was up or planned. Um, I mean, obviously the Downs is, is, I think, bigger than what we had expected, but it was already on the horizon, so.
I'd be curious to know like how the Beacon panned out versus what they thought it was, right? I mean, in the, the town has done some of that work, I think, too, of like, we didn't think we were gonna live in a two bedroom, but maybe they are living in a two bedroom, you know, housing is so tight.
Right, right. And, and there's great amenities there too for families.
Yeah.
So it's not an, an odd choice really.
Yeah.
You know, if you're, thinking of your executive couple with no kids, maybe they have kids.
Yeah, and I know that that wasn't the expectation, but maybe that's how it played out.
Well, you know, to your point earlier, it'd be really interesting to know what it is that the town is looking at already in terms of data. And, you know, can we use some of that for our purposes as well? Cause they're, like you said, they're making those same decisions or, or decisions about growth.
Yeah.
Based on something.
I can talk to John Anderson a little bit about what they have.
Maybe we could, we could collaborate, because there was definitely some collaboration the last time with the town planning office and.
Yeah.
You know, they were super helpful and then they leaned on our information as well, so it serves everybody well to have.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, it, it impacts all their decisions.
Yep.
And their understanding of our requests too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Big stuff. It's five thirty-two. Should we say we're done?
Yeah.
We should. You guys have a, a few things to do.